This conference will now be recorded.
Follow the meeting order. Roll call, old champion.
Mayor DiO.
Here.
Commissioner Butcher.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles.
Here. Excuse me. Commissioner Butcher, we need to pray a prayer for our kids, please. Our hidden calling, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, for letting us all wake up today. Lord, we just ask that you bless this commission and the city staff. Lord, we just ask to bless those in harm's way and those who are sick and not able to take care of themselves. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is sacred, one nation under God.
Indivisible, equal, liberty, justice, for all.
Slavely flag of the state of Mexico. It is the symbol of perfect friendship among united countries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one change, the removal of the closed session. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call, old champion.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Mayor DiO.
Yes. We have another motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consideration of minutes, special minutes of October 15, 2020, and regular minutes of October 26, 2020.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Gandy. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call, old champion.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor DiO.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes.
Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes. Moving on to Commissioner and staff report. Wyatt?
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing new to report at this time.
Does the board have any questions for Wyatt?
Hey Wyatt, on the, on Seventh Street, about the water tower, how big a section of pipe do we have to replace on that water main?
We had to cut out about forty inches of water main, Commissioner Gandy.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
You're welcome, sir. Sharon, any other questions for Wyatt? Moving on to Garrett.
Mayor and Commissioner, I have nothing due to report.
Is there any questions for Garrett? There's no questions for Garrett. Shannon? Is there any questions for Shannon? There's no questions for Shannon. Commissioner Bowles?
Yes, I got a question. I'm going to assess my news. Last meeting, the resolution 2020-087 with the memorandum of understanding between Norley and the city. Can you update us on that?
That, yes, Commissioner Bowles, Mayor Commissioners, that agreement was signed by the hospital. Still currently actively recruiting. We do have one paramedic who hasn't turned in an application right now. So we are, we've reached out to several other services, educational institutions, letting them know, and just advertising, trying to pick up some, some additional help. They won't be full-time employees because the majority of paramedics in this area are already working full-time jobs, even including over in Texas. So this would be a part-time as needed basis is how that would work. So we may hire, it would be perfect if we could hire three, but more than likely, we're going to have to hire several. We do have a set budget that we programmed in, and so we'll be keeping a close eye on that so we don't exceed that.
And how are we doing right now as far as the hospital with COVID cases and everything?
With COVID cases, I believe this morning I was told we have a total of eight admitted here. They did, over the weekend, have some additional ones. They were lucky enough to transfer one of those out to all places closest, but we are reaching our capacities. And I don't know if anybody watched the press conference on Thursday that the governor gives out on a weekly basis, but it's not necessarily the number of free beds available. It's can you actually staff those beds? I believe the number that was thrown out on Thursday was that there's eighty, eighty-five percent of adult beds are occupied in the state. But I believe it was less than two hundred could actually be staffed with physicians and nurses. They are bringing in, I know that UNM has contracted out to bring in additional nurses from outside the area, possibly even out of the country to help. But hospitals are filling up, and it's not just with COVID. As we've said, it's everything else that we have, you know, flu, heart attacks, diabetic complications. So it is getting a little, little tenuous. The next one or two weeks is, we're probably, they're estimating that we could hit capacities on us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard?
Nothing at this time. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes, sir. I'm good, sir, now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gandy?
I have nothing to say now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief Rodriguez?
Nothing.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Rodriguez? Moving on to Chief Lizardo. Does anyone have any questions for Chief Lizardo?
I got a question, Chief. Last time we had our meeting, there was a water main or a water break over in the fire station. You guys had to move out?
Oh, the sewer.
The sewer, okay.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking about the water main, Scotty has. But sewer, you guys get that all fixed up? Anything's all good?
Yes, sir, we did. We were able to get a company in, I believe last Friday, and they were able to get it fixed. So we're, we're on it again, so.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Chief Lizardo? Moving on to City Manager, James Williams.
Mayor Commissioners, I have a couple of things, just to update you on a couple of projects. The Veterans Memorial Project, if you haven't gone by, the majority of the demolition is done. It's just a matter of getting a couple of more debris, debris piles removed, as well as some leveling, just to finish that up. We do still have one quiet title suit for the one remaining structure on that block. Unfortunately, the pandemic has really slowed that process down. I spoke with Mr. Lawson today. He was going to be visiting with the attorney who was filing that to find out the status and try to give us an ETA on that. Waiting to hear back from the architects to find out, come out with the revised design so we can start moving forward with some planning on that. As far as Avenue D, you can see that it is complete. The state did sign off on everything last week, so that project is completed. The Main Street project, I believe over a month ago, we discussed, we did discuss this. So on September 18th, they did what they call the project, for the bid opening day. The engineer's estimate for the project was eighteen point eight million. Low bid came out at twenty-four point eight. I checked, did some digging today. They are rebidding that project. It appears that they will release, release the RFP on November 23rd, and the opening day will be in January. They're hoping that still the project is still on track for construction beginning in March of 2021. But that is the only update I have on that Main Street project. Other than DOT will be here, I believe, starting next week. They're going to be doing a mill and inlay basically on Main Street, starting at Van Buren, going north on Hope. Once they finish that with any remaining material that they have, they'll start at Avenue E and work their way south on that. And that is just to work on those areas that are not within the Phase One of the project, but to help stabilize that and smooth out that roadway. Master Report, we have, we still, they actually released the RFP on, or I'm sorry, they opened the RFP on November 23rd. So we'll hopefully have some type of an update either at our next meeting or our last meeting in December. They did say that worst-case scenario, they'll have a new architectural contract in place by January 8th, and then we can figure out what's the timeline as far as having all the construction documents and for a groundbreaking. And then our utilities construction up on North Main, they did start that last week. It is underway. It's a sixty-day project. I don't know if it's calendar days or if it's actual working days, but they seem to be moving along without any problems. And then what we had discussed at our last meeting regarding to the rentals of city buildings, we are working on scheduling a meeting for next week to just kind of sit down and discuss that, see if we can come up with some solutions to bring back to commission if they desire to take action on it. Other than the fire station question, that's all I have to report.
Is there any questions by the board for James?
Yeah, as far as with the Main Street project, there, James, what kind of financial obligations is the city responsible for? And how are we looking in that area as far as our funding that we have to?
Sure. So if you remember, our, I actually looked at the bid tabulation they did have available, and we had originally estimated with materials and then engineering, we estimated one point four. It appears on this last bid, that portion of the project came in at one point two. We have, we actually just have to transfer funds through one of our capital outlay appropriations. That's three hundred fifty-two thousand. We'll be transferring that to NMDOT that they will put in escrow to make a payment towards that portion of the project only. Then we also will be asking for a reauthorization for one of our other capital outlay projects in the amount of two hundred forty thousand to put towards that project. The EDA, the state EDA cares grant funding that we apply for. I'm hoping that we will hear something back by the end of this month. I know that they were currently, made it to what I believe is the final review step. It's just that their board has to need to approve that, and that will cover the rest. In the event that we don't get that care's funding, we still have four years from completion of the entire project to begin paying the remaining amount. So roughly, we already, we have about fifty percent of the project already covered. We're still actively seeking other funding to help cover, cover the rest so we don't have to take it out of local funds.
Is there any other questions for James? There's no other question for James. City Attorney McMahon?
Nothing to report, sir. Thank you.
Is there any question for the city attorney? There's no question for the city attorney. Open the floor up for public comment.
I do have one thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We start our large item pickup next week. So individuals who need large items picked up, they need to contact code enforcement to arranging appointment. And there is a list on our website of the different things that we'll, we'll be able to pick up to help citizens clean up their property.
Thank you. Is there, which, the things that can be put on the road and put out in front of the property?
Well, it's, yes, that, that is on our website. We did mail those flowers out in our water bills as well, but it's, it's by appointment only. They can't, citizens just need to be aware that they can't put stuff out on the curb. They expect it to be picked up unless they call us to arrange an appointment.
We do have over sixty participants during physical pickups, basically. We have four whole days of picking up items on it.
Thank you, Kristin.
There's no public, it's public comment, there's no one to address anything. We'll move on to action items. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020-091, award of construction bid for downtown Whitey Park and Sun. Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Gandy. James?
Mayor Commissioners, with this, the resolution is worded to reject all bids. The reason is contained within our staff summary. We did go out for bid on this. This is outside the specified grant awards that we have at forty-seven thousand dollars. Low bid came in at a hundred and thirty-seven. Unfortunately, this bid was worded in such a means that we could not, I guess, say piecemeal it or select, well, we only want to build this side. So our recommendation is to reject these. We restructured the bid that should you guys decide to reject these bids tonight, we can begin advertisement starting tomorrow to where it will allow us to select portions of any, any part of that bid or maybe just one sign so we can at least get started on this particular project. That bid would be due back within fourteen days, on November 24th, and we would provide the final recommendation for award or not to award the project either December 14th. So if you do approve this resolution tonight, it specifically says that we reject any, or we reject all bids and direct staff to go back out to bid.
And that was for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand?
The low bid was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, but we're not awarding it to anybody.
Is there any other questions by the board?
Yeah, James, as far as these signs themselves, who decides on the signs? As far as what signs we're going to get, is it just the city? Is it Main Street? Who's involved in this?
Are you talking about the design or the price?
The design.
The design.
And the price.
So I think, I know it was several months ago, I know Mara's on the line, but several months ago, we did present those during public meetings as far as what the design, the concept is. Basically, they're, they're kind of a energy-based type sign, or it respects the energy sector and what Levington and Lee County are all about. So those designs are already formalized through the work of Main Street and the project architect. But as far as the finance, we will definitely be the final decision. But should it just be a little over? I know that we had discussions last week. I know Mara, they did their annual Main Street assessment, which they are going to maintain their accreditation still for another year due to their work. But they will hopefully maybe be able to find some additional funding somewhere else if it does go over too far over budget.
Is there any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Campos, your James, do we need to amend our motion? Or is the way that it is worded in the resolution itself suffice for rejecting the bids?
Though, if you, you can just vote on it. You'll be fine because the resolution does specify that we're not, unless we just want to for, you know, public, public meeting purposes, and that might be the cleanest thing is just to approve this motion, and it specifies that we are not awarding this project at this time.
Yeah, I feel better like that as well, James.
Yeah, that, that award kind of like.
Right. But it was, it was, it was worded that way. We were anticipating getting these bids and being able to, this caught us out a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could vote yes or no.
All right. If there's no other further questions, roll call, old champion.
Commissioner Butcher?
No.
Commissioner Campos?
No.
Commissioner Bowles?
No.
Mayor DiO?
No.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Resolution fails. Moving on to second resolution. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a resolution 2020-092, confirmation of approval to quit claim property.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Bowles, second by Commissioner Bernard. James?
Mayor Commissioners, this is a little bit different, but back in 2004, pull up my packet real quick. Back in 2004, the city basically put up a lot, I'm sorry, back in 2003, November of 2003, the city put out a bid to sell a residential lot in Levington, which is highlighted in yellow on the graphic there. They went out to bid, they received one bid, and awarded this bid to Torita McBride. And then on February 12th of 2004, it was quitclaim deeded to Mrs. McBride by the city manager at that time. Mrs. McBride is doing something with the property. I think she may be selling it. I'm not for sure. However, the title company wanted proof that Mr. Wise was authorized to quitclaim this, which we did send the title company a copy of the approved sign to tested minutes, but that's not sufficient enough. And at that time, we weren't, the city at that time was not doing very many resolutions, which they do require resolutions or ordinances by our governing body for property transactions. So this particular resolution where it's worded, it does state that it was approved through sealed bid. It was, and that the city manager was authorized to execute that quitclaim deed, and that she rightfully owns that property. So approval will just, of this resolution will allow us to send this to the title company so she can complete her transaction.
Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions by the board. Roll call, old champion.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Mayor DiO?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020-093, supporting and encouraging individuals having COVID-19 tests performed. Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Gandy. James?
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, based on our, the discussion item that we had at our last meeting, we did go ahead and prepare a resolution which states the city's position on testing that in an effort to reduce the burden on our healthcare system as well as increasing the chance that we can get our kids back in school, that we are strongly encouraging individuals to get tested for COVID-19. It is not in any form or fashion a requirement to get tested. It's just saying that we do support the testing initiative. Like many other government entities in this area are, or elected officials in this area are actually encouraging folks to do. One thing we did do to assist Norley Hospital, they are running a site here in Levington now. But in preparation for the inclement weather, they're going to be utilizing the old fire station for drive-through testing. That way, if we do have any twenty-degree days or out of the wind, they can still continue that testing. Basically, people who want to get tested Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays right now from eight to ten, they have the ability to come off of Central on the East and pull through the parking lot. They'll go through one of the bays of the old fire station and exit out on the left street. It occurred for the first time today, and it went very smooth. There's only a few little tweaks that we're going to make to the system over there, but those will be in place by Wednesday. I would stand for any questions you may have.
How many people did they go through there today, James?
I don't know those numbers. I just know that between seven forty-five and eight, we probably already had eight cars lined up.
James, any questions?
Yes, sir.
So again, Commissioner?
Yes, do people have to pre-register before they arrive to get tested?
Not at, not at the Norley site, sir. With the Department of Health, they do, with Department of Health sites, they do want you to pre-register. With Norley, you do not. You just show up and it's no charge. They basically get your name and, and date of birth, and have you signed consent to have the test done, and then you have the test, and you'll wait on those results.
What is the typical waiting time for those results, James?
Typically, it's been about four days, but I would need to confirm. I don't know if they'll be sending them to a different lab or still up to the state to where hopefully we can get quicker turnaround times.
Okay, thank you.
James of Norley, where are they holding their testing?
Well, they're not actually doing testing like this at Norley. The only way that you get tested at Norley is if you go into see your primary care physician for an appointment, and you have symptoms, or if you go to the emergency room. But they don't have a testing facility at the hospital. This operation was actually moved from the fairgrounds that they've been doing for the past couple of months.
Which, the one that's in the fire station?
The one that's currently in the fire station, yes, sir. They just changed that location from out of the fairgrounds to here.
Is it going to be staying in that, that fire station?
Yes, sir. For the foreseeable future, yes, sir.
Okay. Is there adequate signage to figure that out?
Actually, yes. What we've done is, well, actually, the hospital, they do have signage. They place signage over on, and the point is I'm working on it. They have placed signage at Love and Central. There's also a sign at Central and East Street. We then actually have traffic block at the intersection of Avenue A and East Street, except for that one little house to where you, you can only travel south on East Street. So there is signage out there, the digital display board, that is the county, I believe it's the county road departments. Mr. Shaw had mentioned today, he's getting the county to update that to let the public know the location. But it's, it's been pushed out. I know they did a Facebook Live video this morning trying to get the word out on social media as well. But there, I believe there's adequate signage for it.
Is there any other questions by the board? No further questions. Roll call, old champion.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor DiO?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020-094, creation of a special fund for CARES Act expenditures and revenues.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Gandy. James?
Um, yes, sir. I know Gary's on the line, but basically, DFA told us after we submitted our quarterly report that since this is federal funding, they want us to track this in a separate fund. So what this resolution will do is create Fund 218, which will be specifically for all CARES Act funding that we have.
Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions by the board. Shannon?
Mayor DiO?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider accounts payable.
Second. Mr. Mayor? Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Gandy. Garrett?
If I may, your mayor and commission, our single largest expenditure on this report is our semi-annual debt service payment for hold harmless to Lee County State Bank, the twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, about middle of the page. I'm available, though, if you have any other questions.
Park Row Serving, I know what that one is. If you recall, back in, I think it was June, or maybe it was prior to June, May or June, part of the hotel project on North Main, we used economic development funds to pay for the traffic study and all of, all of that data for that. And that is payment to you then later, the once you put that together.
Right.
Does the funds provide sewage?
Yes, sir.
Nice to see our expenditures go in.
Better than what was last month, man, that was good. Or last meeting.
Bid nomination. That is for Fire Department, their pharmaceutical machine annual contract.
Everybody good? Is there any other questions by the board? There's no other questions by the board. Roll call Bo Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Mayor De Rio?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Accounts payables are approved. Do I have a final motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second if you're going to finish it.
Motion was made by, to adjourn by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Gandy. Is there any further questions? There's no further questions. Roll call Bo Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor De Rio?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.